Henry Siemens.
Here.
Brian Simmons.
Here.
Robert Van Winkle.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
Let's bow our heads. Our dear, most gracious heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this day that you provided us. Lord, we want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you, Lord, and I pray that this commission makes the decisions that are good in thy sight, Lord. Lord, I want to pray to you for all those military personnel that we have throughout this world. We ask you, Lord, to watch over them and care for them, Lord, and bring them home safely. We ask you to forgive us of our sins and no sin against us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Free approval of April 20 meeting minutes. Any action? Motion by Meeky, here a second.
A second.
Mr. Chandler. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle. Michael Woodley.
Yes. Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Item number four, quarterly reports. Any questions?
Uh, yeah. Chairman, I got a question. Truck repair, $3,500. Is that on the old truck or the max? The new one?
I didn't hear a question, Bill, I'm sorry.
Truck repair, $3,500. Is that on the garbage truck?
I think he's looking in the Committee A notes already.
Yeah.
This is quarter reports, I hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I want to ask a question of Committee A.
Any other questions, comments? Any action?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve quarter reports as presented.
Motion by Will to approve, here a second.
A second.
Mr. Chandler. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes. Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Uh, item number five, Committee A report.
Mr. Chairman, Committee A met May the 4th, the mayor's office for budget discussion for solid waste. Revenues and expenditures were discussed for the upcoming budget year. Uh, first item was the budget discussion and a motion was made by Mr. Siemens to implement a three cent per pound charge for commercial haulers for dumping at county convenience centers effective June 1, 2021, seconded by Mr. Chandler. And I'd like to make that in form of a motion to approve that by the commission.
Question on the motion. Are charging three cents to the haulers, private haulers? Is there a possibility we can get that $7 took off the light bill?
I'm not at this, I mean, me personally, I don't see how you will be able to do away with the $7 fee and be able to fund solid waste.
Without tax dollars.
Without property tax dollars. That was the reasoning behind the fee was so we could free up property tax pennies and place them elsewhere like ambulance service and general debt service and general fund, places like that.
Got a question. Uh, in December, does this $7 fee not come off anyway?
By recollection of that resolution, it has to be renewed, uh, by owner before December 31st of this year. I'm, I'm pretty sure.
I was, I mean, I would have to look at the resolution. I was not aware that it had a expiration date.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure.
Something that we'll have to explore because we've got to fund solid waste and I, I don't see a way to fund it without that fee.
Can't guarantee that that will pass. Committee or commission.
No, I mean, I can't guarantee anything, no.
I think there will be, and, and I'll just say this, I think that everybody would probably really like to see that. I think there's a, we have a lot of work to get there and that work may not be completed by then. It's, it's hard to say. I mean, you know, Bill, you were asking about $3,500 for, for that truck. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I had to step out for that because Randy and I, we had a senior companion meeting that afternoon and I had to get over there to that when, when y'all done the amendments, but I'm pretty sure if I remember correctly on that, uh, on that amendment, that was to pay for brakes on the old freight liner, uh, was part of it. And also too, and William, Henry, y'all, the Committee A that was there can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of it too would be to help finish out this year to where we wouldn't have to come back to do any other amendments. It's not that that money would be spent entirely because I don't think the brakes, of course, didn't cost $3,500, but that, to answer that question you had a few minutes ago, but that's just one of the things that we have that comes up in solid waste. Solid waste changes, as we've talked about and we've experienced in the last, I'd say more in the last two years than we have anything. The closer everything gets to privatization of your transfer stations, which are private, and your landfills that are private. You know, when all that is pretty much all around you and you've got the distance that you have to go, yeah, it, that cost is, goes up. You know, I, Grundy County had a budget buster. I mean, theirs went from like 30 something bucks to high, some, some things that they were taking over there that were unpacked at $50 a ton. I think they're now paying like $46 or $7 a ton on average of what they're taking to the landfill. You know, right now, we're not at that. We're at, uh, 4650. Next year or this August, I'll, I'll look for an increase, to be honest with you. To tell you what that increase is going to be right now, don't know. But typically that's when they do the increase. So there's a lot of steps to take to get to there. And I think making, making the right steps to get to that point, uh, is going to have to be studied and studied correctly.
I think everybody is also aware of what the Consumer Price Index done for the month of April. It went up, what, 4.2%?
Yeah.
So, you know, everything's just going up. The price of doing business is going up. And, uh, it's our responsibility as a county court to, uh, to make these tough decisions.
And, and to add to that, and you're absolutely correct, it is not just going up. And when you look at 4.2% in the month of April, it's going up rapidly. You know, you go buy some lumber. I'm just using that as example. And any, anything that you've got to replace, whether it's anything to do with replacing a commode in, inside that, uh, bathroom, we have not done that, but there are other older buildings here in this county that we service that we have to do that with and the price goes up. Prices not, is, is not, the prices are not ignoring solid waste. And yeah, I'd love to be able to take it, but I also want to be conscious of the efforts we make that will work.
Buying the BDS property. Have you heard anything else from them?
Uh, supposed to close the first week in June. Such as, I, I don't. That's their plans, yes.
I got a motion by Will to hear a second. Second, Mr. Mosley. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom. Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson. Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle. Michael Woodley.
Wish to change your vote?
Next item of business was budget amendments. Um, they are on the back, on the back of your pages here. There are four, I believe. First one's General Fund 101. It was a, uh, there was no additional funds come out of, um, fund balance. It's office supplies, $250. There was a change, or a swap basically in overtime and deputies in the sheriff's department. So 3,000 would come out of the deputy line item and go into the overtime line item. Uh, 575 in printing stationary. Uh, Veterans Affairs would, I'm sorry, the postage line would go up $1,500. That was due to the sending out of the notices from. Ex, uh, reappraisal, I'm sorry. And some of that, that money would all come out of the veterans line item, which is money that hasn't been spent this year, uh, of 2,325 total. A budget amendment on General Fund, 5,325. Next fund was solid waste, truck repair. Uh, like Greg said, that was, uh, brakes on one of the trucks. Uh, we also are responsible for some repairs on the new truck and, um, I think they pay, they said they paid for, the cable was broke four or five times last year. That was, uh, that we are responsible for, so that, uh, eat into that cost a little bit. $3,500 was the total there and it would come from fund balance. Uh, local par, local purpose tax, uh, that's the fire department's insurance would increase by, went up, we saw an increase in that, $7,000. And that would come from fund balance. And debt service fund, uh, all of the, um, 76,131 was put into interest that should have been showed in principal. And that would just be to correct, make that correction to separate interest and principal. I'd put that in the form of a motion to approve these budget amendments as presented.
A motion by Will to approve these amendments. Second. Go ahead.
Well, like I said a while ago, that's for, that was for the brakes, but it's also for anything else that may happen between now and June the 30th. Like Will said a few minutes ago, it was, it's, it's just like, for instance, you know, if we need to adjust overtime, I think we did that last month, overtime, did we not? For the jail, to give you an example, to where we wouldn't have to come back and do, do that. It doesn't mean that it's going to be used. Hopefully it won't, but if it does, it's there to be able to be used and we wouldn't have to come back to do an amendment. So we have to get all the amendments and everything done and covered, all of our bases covered of the possibilities between now and June the 30th or the end of the fiscal year.
I was only impressed with any repairs needed on that truck rental, they would repair it.
This was not on the truck rental, that was on the old freight liner. The brakes was on the old freight liner. On that truck, we are responsible for the cable. Yes. And the tires. And. And that's part of the, and the. Oil and the fluids, yes. Oil and fluids, yes. So we are responsible for those things.
So this truck repair was on the old truck.
Yeah. It's not necessarily money that's already been spent. We've still got three months to deal with when this was taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Will to hear a second.
A second.
Second, Mr. Chandler. Roll call, please.
David Chandler. Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle. Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
I would like to make a comment, please. Uh, and we're going to get to that, sure, I think here in some new business, but all this COVID money that the county is getting, there's so many restrictions on that, I mean, would you?
We've talked about it.
Lack of a better word, uh, it's pretty much useless to us, uh, on things we actually need, but could y'all explore just buying a new garbage truck with some of that and let's do away with this lease and save us $4,000 a month?
We will look into that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, that was all on the May 4th meeting. We also met May the 12th to, uh, as budget, for budget. Meeting that we did not, there was nothing that required action in the May the 12th meeting, it was just for information purposes, for, we're working on the budget. That's all I have.
Item number six, support of a redistricting, redistricting committee and, uh, approval resolution?
Yes, uh, in your packets, you got a resolution for the, uh, establishing a redistricting, uh, committee. Um, we were, the part of property assessment, uh, in the comptroller's office, had a discussion with them last week, they, or week before last, and they sent this to me. We have to coordinate law and you'll see the TCA codes up there and there are other TCA codes that goes along with that. I've talked extensively with, uh, Mr. Wayne Simons also about, uh, the redistricting. And in that, it also has, uh, now, this does not mean you have to change boundaries, okay? That's what this committee is to decide. Um, and I've had a lot of question about that. But with the population that Van Buren County is, has and has the increase, and it's also now a 5% uh, rule where it used to be a 10%. And it has to be done every 10 years. This committee has to be formed regardless of what we do. If we do, if we don't do it, we're in violation of that statute. Anyway, um, the way it stands right now with that, we have to be one commissioner representative of every 500 people. And basically from what the numbers that Wayne and I talked about and what the GIS section has talked about, and I'm talking about in Nashville and the comptroller, Secretary of State, that there will be, uh, we can use them, we can go through the development district and use them, or we could use an outside source to, to be able to use, but we do have to do that and explore that. But with the population right at 6,000, it's going to, it's going to increase to county commission from 10 to 12 commissioners. Now, what this committee does and puts a plan together and we can get advice through any of those sources that I just mentioned, uh, throughout this planning process. But this, uh, as you can see at its first meeting and it kind of spells out and everything will be handed and given to, prior to this, uh, first meeting that this committee has, they will get all the laws and everything that are associated with redistricting of, of Van Buren County districts, if that is what could be. There are really two districts, I think, that are going to be affected the most. And if y'all want to know what those are, I'll let you know. Those are the second and the fourth. Had large populations, uh, uh, increased since the last time there was a redistricting in those two districts. Does not mean the other districts may or may not be, uh, uh, affected because that's a good possibility. I don't know yet and nobody knows until you get in there and get to looking at it. Could be that you decide, well, we'll leave the districts exactly where they're at and just add a commissioner in those two districts. And that would get your 12 people, or your 12 commissioners, and you still meet your 5% rule. And that's what this is for, but we're required to, to do this. And this is the people that, uh, as you can see in section two of the resolution, um, these are the people that I have that are appointed to this. And of course, Wayne Simons is one of those that I've, uh, appointed and he's in District Two, uh, as well. And in that law, it does say that it's, it doesn't say you have to, but it says it's a good idea, so to speak, to put the election administrator on this committee. I agree with that. And that's why I've got, so I've got, I'll go ahead and read out those, if you want me to, those five. And first one is Will Maxwell, Henry Siemens, Wayne Simons, Joy Grissom, and Terry Hickey.
Mayor, is this mandated by the state you do this every 10 years or is this?
Yes, sir.
It is?
It is.
So it's time to do it?
It is.
Don't have nothing to do with the census we just took?
Pardon, I didn't hear that last part of the, of your question.
Let me rephrase the question. You answered my question, it's mandated by the state to do that every 10 years.
Yeah, at the top of that, at the very first paragraph that's, that gives that code.
Um, I read that. Uh, is this based on voters in the district or the population?
Population.
Population. So there's a possibility that my district, Henry's district, two is the biggest district we have in the county.
It, it is, population wise, it is.
Population wise.
Right.
Okay. Is this going, is the Mennonites, excuse my language, but there are a lot of them moved in and the population will be bigger in that district four?
Actually, the second district is the most populated district. District four is the second most populated. Um, and yes, that's the driving force behind it. And it is because of the census duly on the population, not on voters.
Thank you.
Action.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept the resolution.
Vicki.
Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey. William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson. Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle. Michael Woodley.
Wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Item number seven, bond approval for Cheryl Cole, fiscal year 2021, 2022. Any action?
Make a motion to approve bond for Cheryl Cole.
I'll second that motion.
Read the motion. Brian and Bill, say to me. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson. Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Is there any old business? Or is there any new business?
I have, I have something I'd like to address the commission on. Would that be appropriate on the new business?
Yes.
I don't know how to approach this, whether it's the county mayor, city mayor, American Legion, or the Historical Society. We have two monuments over there with soldiers that give their life at the old courthouse. They gave their life for us to have freedom to fly a flag. Just recently put one up, day before yesterday, but I don't like the way it's flying. It's 10 foot below the top, almost half mast. Loose, flying around everywhere, not tied upright. Now, I don't know, I'm not very happy with it. We are better than this Van Buren County. We are much better than this and we owe it to our dead soldiers that give their life, sacrifice their life for our freedom. And we need to fly a good decent flag and get it put up properly. I don't know who's be over this, but I'm not well pleased with it at all. Van Buren County, we're better than this and let's get it to a cure of, and I put it in form of motion if I need to.
Where was the flag at?
Pardon me?
It's, uh, it's the flag at the old courthouse, over the monuments. I, I believe it needs a new rope is what it's needing. That's what, that's where it's at.
Okay.
Can you hear that?
Sure.
I just want it fixed. I think federal law says the flag's got to go all the way to the top.
Well, if it's the rope, that's the reason why it's coming down.
The United States flag.
I know. Yeah, it says, it's the United States flag, then the state flag, and then, and then the counter flag.
Anything going to the top is considered half mast.
It's the rope there, we'll fix it.
Ours is 10 foot below the top.
Okay.
Flying around everywhere. Whoever needs to get it fixed, if you want me putting it in form of motion, that we do it? You going to take care of it?
I just got through saying yes twice.
Thank you, sir. Any other new business?
I do.
Mr. Mayor.
I would like to schedule an A and B committee meeting. Those on Committee B, I talked to Brian today and Brian's going to be out of town for a little bit, um, be out of pockets, so if we could look at Monday for those on Committee B. At 4:30 and then, well, of course, we'll put it in the paper first thing in the morning.
That's fine.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and schedule Committee B at 4:30. Then Committee A. I, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of looking at the two guys here that on their schedules, I think it was the 24th and 25th.
Oh, for next week?
Yeah.
Uh, next week, I'm off to 26th and 27th.
About the.
Now, that first week of June, I think Will and I, I think our schedule synchronized around the Friday, the 4th, or that Thur, next Thursday. Okay, I'm good on the 27th or 26th or 27th of next week.
Can we do it on the 27th, those y'all on Committee A?
I'm, what about the other guy?
47th. Okay. Evening would be good, yeah. What time? Two?
B.
B is 4:30 Monday.
Any other new business?
I just want to talk real quick on what Brian brought up there on the, on the COVID. There is so much, and he's correct about one thing, there is a lot of things in there that are restricted. You know, at first, we were going to be able to get part of the money right off the bat and there was no, nothing restrict wise. That's all gone away. Now there is many restrictions that goes with it. And that's one thing that Committee A, and I'm glad y'all put 2 o'clock because we might be here till 10 if we get to talking about COVID, but, or the COVID month, uh, uh, the CARES Act, I should say. But there is a lot in there and I sent y'all that, that information and there is, there is a, quite a bit that goes with it. Uh, it is pretty easy to look at the things you cannot use it for. You know, and I, I'd looked and Brian had talked to me about a truck earlier today and, and, and sanitation. There is real, I don't think there, to answer your question, Brian, as far as that goes, I don't think there's anything there that might cover it. If there is though, we'll be able to find it. We, we have two outlets that we'll be able to, with those questions, be able to find out and know for sure if we can. I will let you know that we have already opened the portal. The portal is open, we just got to load in, you know, what this commission decides to use it for. It's 1.14, it's 1.14 million is what Van Buren County will be getting. Now, that's a lot of money and it is, it is, goes all the way through 2024. There are some things you can stretch out to 2026. There are some things you can stretch out to 2026. Very few things you can stretch out to 2026, but for the most part, it, everything, the, most of the items in here has to be used by 2024. You know, it doesn't mean that you can go out and we'll go out and start using it and have it all used up by 2023, I don't know, or 2022, but there's a lot that go through it and it, and it's just going to take some time. And so when we look at this and, and decide and what they want you to do is they want you to dump whatever you're going to use, from my understanding, you put everything in there, what you're going to be using, but you don't atomize it, you atom, you only put your number in there, what you're going to be getting. There are many things that can be used. That is just what's going to have to be what's most important, what y'all feel is most important for Van Buren County. And we have a lot of things that are important for Van Buren County, of course. One other thing too, on, under new business, Mr. Chairman, y'all, so we sent a policy or an on-call policy for the ambulance service and there's some budgetary, there's one budgetary item on there and then of course, talking to Stacy and I sent this to Howard for approval too, and he advises not to do anything with that and, and I advise that we, it goes back to committee A and by that time, he might issue an opinion by the time y'all meet on the 27th. So hopefully we'll get that from him owner before the, May the 27th. I have nothing else.
The commission, have you anything?
Only other thing I do have, I've got, you've got trial balances there that I give to you. It was dated the 13th, Tammy's been out, she's got some sickness in her family and she, we have an updated one that we looked at, but we can't give it out unless she's, unless she initials it and signs it rather. But anyway, if you have any questions about that, feel free to ask.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
You might have the honest one to address the board.
Owner before, the best of my recollection of that and.
We have to, we bid at our garbage hall a few months ago. I can't tell you exactly when it was, I think it was November, December, thereabouts. We can bid it out every month if we want to, but before we take anything out there, we'll have to rebid it. Hopefully there'll be the low bidder, you know, but yes. It is going to, yeah, and no, no pun intended on garbage, but it'll save a ton, so to speak.
Motion adjourned by Will to hear a second.
I'll second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?